Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of December 17th here in the Convent. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask everyone to stay standing for a moment of silence for the passing of Keith Rosenau. He was a 1972 graduate of Abington High School. He hadn't lived in Abington for some time, but he left his mark on the town. Back in 2011, the Abington Historical Commission ran a contest to design a flag to commemorate the town's 2012 tricentennial. Keith entered and won that contest. One copy of that flag was produced, and I think it stands in the corridor. So we're going to ask you to pause for a moment of silence. Thank you all very much.
If I could, Mr. Jones, I'd just like to unfurl that flag, just so people don't talk about it. I was on the historical commission. We actually had a lot of entries in the flag contest. It's kind of a neat -- I don't know if people can see it, but basically it all flows. It's kind of a neat flag, hopefully we'll get it up on the cable. Maybe not there. I've got anything on cable?
Remove the cables off.
Kind of a neat flag. Thank you, Ken. I appreciate it.
Kevin, do you have anything?
Nothing.
No?
Nothing, Tom.
Ken?
Just thank you for everyone that helped make Abington celebrate. It's a great weekend from the people that donated moving the tree, the tree lighting. Santa donated his time down. It was just a great evening. It was a great weekend of events. The ugly sweater ball hit a record crowd, and I did win second place, but that was just a regular sweater, too, by the way. So thank you for everyone to come, and hopefully next year will be bigger and better events. So not a bigotry, though, because we risked that falling down, but this was a perfect height tree this year.
Jim?
I'd just like to take a second and congratulate the Abington High School football team, 2019 Division VII state champions after defeating Leicester on Saturday, December 7th, at Gillette Stadium. So congratulations to Coach Keller, Coach Riley, and the whole team.
Congratulations.
Good job. That was a great game. It was freezing there. I happened to go, and I didn't play football for Abington or anything, but it was what a great time, great game. The fans were awesome, and really, congratulations to that team. I have an announcement for Craft Family Blood Donor Center blood drive hosted by the Abington Police, 215 Center Street, Abington, Mass., code 251. A board, the Dana Faber Cancer Institute, bringing the women's hospital blood mobiles parked in the front parking lot, Saturday, December 28th, at 2:00 past 19:00, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. Appointments, you can log on to tinur.com/AbingP O L D 2019, sorry. Eligibility questions, you can call 617-632-286. Appointments I recommended, Watkins, taken as a special thank you. Donors will receive a Craft Family Blood Donor Center $5 Dunkin' Donuts. So I wanted to...
Yeah, if you're going to give, remember, be well hydrated.
Yes.
I know it's kind of early in the morning, but be well hydrated, so.
That is true. Public comment on any of the agenda items? None? All right. No public appointments. Our request by 10th District Brewing Company, 748 Brockton Ave., to open on Tuesday, December 24th, from noon to 6:00 p.m. Someone here from 10th District? Do it again. Back again.
How's your new location working out?
It's going very well.
See a lot of cars there, so it looks like you're doing pretty good.
Yeah, we have slightly more parking than we did at our last place, so that's a good thing.
Good.
So this is probably fourth year in a row that Christmas Eve falls outside of our normal business hours, so just requesting additional hours the day before the holiday.
Any questions from anybody?
Would you normally not be open on that Tuesday night, or?
Not open on Tuesdays.
Okay.
Anything special about that? Any live music or anything else going on?
I don't think we have anything planned that night. We do have a couple of events leading up to that over the weekend. We have some food this weekend. There's an ugly sweater contest Saturday morning.
You'll get first place this time. Excellent, excellent.
So a couple of events leading up to it, but it's typically a fun evening. We have a lot of our regulars that stop in before Christmas to say hello, and a lot of people who like to fill their growlers before they head off to the family parties.
Now that you've had a chance to plug your business, I would make a motion to allow additional hours on Christmas Eve for the 10th District Brewing from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? unanimous.
Appreciate it. Happy holidays.
All right. All right. Report for Mary Barrett Costello, Abington Alehouse, to open at 11:30 a.m. on Sundays for brunch. Mary? Want to come on?
I'd speak.
Okay. Okay. He can introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Ed Stewart, Abington Alehouse.
Ed, how are you?
Great, great. I thought the time was...
10:30.
It is.
Did I read it wrong?
Said 11:30.
Oh, my apologies. It is 10:30.
Okay.
I missed that. Go ahead.
Sundays, we open every day at 11:30, and Sundays at 12:00, and we'd like to begin a Sunday brunch. That's why we're requesting an earlier serve time on Sundays. I think if we were to do a brunch, obviously, blood and berries and mimosas are popular, and we'd like to offer a full service if we could.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Should we start this Sunday, or?
No. Once we got approval, we're pretty close to, we're talking about an alacot brunch, so it would not be right away. It wouldn't be this Sunday, but it would be fairly soon.
Okay.
Want to add more?
Good. Any other questions?
Can we check with the police chief about this?
No, we didn't think to ask. No. We seized the agenda, but we didn't specifically ask.
Entertain a motion?
There are other restaurants in town that open heavy alcohol earlier than 11:30, so I don't think it's a big concern.
10:30.
I don't know of any issues.
Before 11:00. And so I'll make a motion to allow Abington Alehouse to open up at 10:30 a.m. on Sundays for brunch instead of alcohol.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Have a nice holiday.
You, too. You, too. All right. Annual license renewals. Please vote to approve the following license renewals, pending receipt of all paperwork, satisfactory inspections, and up-to-date taxes. We have Class 1 and 2, alcohol, common victory, entertainment, automatic amusement, building, pool, tables, bowling alley, lodging, and livery. Want to take it by page, gentlemen, or do you want to do each individual, or?
Yeah, one page at a time is usually pretty good.
All right. So combined Class 1 and 2 license renewals from A.J., A slash J Equipment Repair, down to Rivers Auto, Inc.
I just have one question if I could ask the town manager. We checked with, there's no back taxes due on anyone, and no one had any concerns about these license renewals at all, or?
Well, the police department has reviewed all these, and as part of the motion, none of these would be released until any outstanding taxes, fees to the town had been made whole. But as I said, the police department specifically sees this list and makes any recommendations they may have, and we don't have anything. Chief hasn't provided any negative feedback on any of these.
Yep, and I'm like it does. It says, pending receipt of all paperwork, satisfactory inspections, and up-to-date taxes.
I'll make the motion to approve Page 1, A.J. Equipment Repair to Rivers Auto, Inc., pending receipt of all paperwork, taxes, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Page 2, Route 123, Auto Brokers, down to Universal Autobody.
Can I just ask one other question, too? There's been no increases in the amount of changes in the restrictions in any of these licenses?
No, these are exactly...
Is anybody increasing more?
Exactly. As is, yes.
I would make that motion for Page 2, from Route 123, Auto Brokers to Universal Autobody. These are all Class 1, Class 2 licenses.
I'll second.
And obviously contingent upon pending receipt of all... Pending receipt of all paperwork, satisfactory inspections, and up-to-date taxes.
Okay. And we have a second, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. Licenses. So we're voting on all of those. So licenses, businesses from Abington Alehouse down to Old Town. I would ask that we hold out Columbus Club of Abington.
I'll make a motion. We accept the licenses on this page from Abington Alehouse to Old Town Cafe with the exclusion of the Columbus Club of Abington, pending receipt of all paperwork, satisfactory inspections, and up-to-date taxes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No.
I'd make a motion to approve the Columbus Club of Abington, otherwise known as the Knights of Columbus Hall, with the same caveats.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
They don't need it.
And abstain? Tim and I abstain from that one.
Mm-hmm. Now I understand.
From Omoto Gardens down to, let's go all the way down to Your Convenience Store.
Can I just exclude Trukey's in the first vote, please?
Say that again?
Can I exclude Trukey Supermarket in that first vote?
Oh, okay.
Unless I make the motion.
Someone will make that motion?
I'll make that motion from Omoto Garden down to Your Convenience Store with the exclusion of Trukey Supermarket.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Have someone make a motion on Trukey Supermarket, please?
I'll make the motion on Trukey's Supermarket to approve pending receipt of all satisfactory inspection taxes up to date.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
One abstention. All right. Lodging?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve four lodging places on this piece of paper.
From 108 Adams Street down to 96 railroad street?
Yes.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And the last one, livery, star of the sea, livery?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, have it. All righty. That does Abington annual licenses. Next is Abington Cable Access Corporation membership update. This is intended to be a brief update by Joe Shea regarding his call for a special meeting of the membership after having secured the necessary number of signatures required. He'll be discussing the process as well as the draft agenda for the meeting. Mr. Shea?
Thank you.
Joe, you're not representing, you're not representing Abington.
You're representing... The Abington A.B. Cable Access Media Civic Group. It's a separate committee that has been formed since late October. It has about over 20 members, most of whom attend more, one more meetings such as that. We did submit a petition. We needed 10% of the membership for a petition to get a call for a meeting by the members. We submitted, the list that we can see is about 153 members. We submitted 31 signatures the day before Thanksgiving. Lisa Presant informed us that per our petition, a meeting has been scheduled for this Friday night, 6 o'clock, at the Cable TV studio. We have prepared an agenda. We have several things we want to do. We want the open position on the board directors since the October 29th meeting. We have nominated Robert Kelly, who serves many positions in this town very well, and we would like to get him on. He's a CPA. I think he will do a very good job of filling that open position. The bylaws call for an annual report and annual financial review to be done every year. We would like to see a copy of those. We'd also like to arrange to have those circulated. I don't know if the selectmen have a copy, but they should go to the selectmen. I think they should go to town clerk and to the library, as most town documents do. I don't think that is happening. There has been discussion on the meeting procedures. The bylaws refer to the fact that they follow state law, but only as a guideline. When you look at what is happening, it's unclear, there are subsided differences between what they are doing and what the usual meeting guidelines call for. I'd like to see a copy of what their differences are, so we know what those differences are, and people can know what the deal is. For example, one issue that has come up is the bylaws, both the old and the new, call for when you go into a closed session, as referred to in the executive. You have to give the reason. I think it was May 7th to May 8th, they went into an executive session for purposes of personnel and policies. Policies are usually not executive session, however. But then they went into an executive session, a closed session, starting in June, it was June 5th, and I think it was changed to 12th, and I think it stayed remaining that. However, the notice on the cable TV station and printed did not give a reason. And as far as I know, nothing has been published since. Now, since that time, there have been at least three personnel actions. The hiring of a lawyer, Ms. Attorney Timmins, the hiring of Mr. Tocchi, and the termination of Justin Shanahan. When were those dealt with? They should have been something out there saying they were being dealt, there were personnel issues were being discussed. Those are concerns. We need transparency. We need to have an idea of what is happening and how the public can know what to expect. And I think that should be a concern for the selectmen also, because the selectmen helped set up the corporation several years ago, and the selectmen also approved the bylaws, and they were approved in the last year, in this year. There are supposed to be three, bylaws call for three regular meetings a year. We'd like to see when those three regular meetings are going to be scheduled. It's important so people know what to expect and when to contend. We'd like to discuss what has happened in 2019, especially since the October 22nd termination of Justin Shanahan, the executive director, how the program's going. I know at least two of the major people who've done a lot of productions for the cable TV have left. Dan Maron Breelman, who I'll count as one, and Billy Davis, who did a tremendous amount of filming a program. And he is going to do some more filming, but like the last one, he's done for the high school. Well, he's going to do some other things, but he's going to cut way back on what he's doing. Let's make sure we review how good the updated membership list, and then see if the membership wants to take a vote of confidence or no confidence in the board directors. People I talked to are still upset about what has happened, and they're concerned. The issue has not gone away. And new things have been found. For example, the thing about the annual report of financial, annual financial review. I mean, I would think that that should have been produced as part of the documents provided to you in November. And it's something you need to have information on. We have concerns, and we wish to get, and we wish to get more transparency and information in the picture. We also want to get the vacant position of the board directors. We subpoena Bob Kelly as an excellent candidate. So we're going to see, we're going to have the meeting on October 20th, December 20th, and then we will try and push for another meeting in January to fill the vacant board director position. What time is the meeting on Friday, Joe? 6 o'clock. Cable TV studio will be next to the, on the western end of the high school. Do they make, do they have any questions?
Anybody?
You said that you have, there's a...
Sure, she, I'm sorry.
There's 153 members?
I'm going, we were given two paper lists. One had about 150 on it, and one had about 40.
What was the, how many on the second list? I'm sorry, did he?
Forty.
Forty, okay.
But they weren't like, they were like emailed. I can show you what I have, but I mean, when Lisa Presant sent this thing out to the membership, November 20th, the meeting, she sent out to 153 people. I'm using that as the basis of what we have. I can show you what we had before, and I think some of these lists were a good while ago, but...
Now, these, when you say members, this isn't members of your group. This is members of the actual Abington Community Access and Media, not the board directors, not the board of directors meeting, but the actual vote members.
They have to have signed up, yes.
Right, and they have to be Abington resident or do business in Abington?
I'm not sure. You have to be an Abington resident to vote on some scenes. I see some names there that I don't think are Abington residents. So in some names, it just, you don't know what they are, to be absolutely honest with you.
So Uncle O.
What?
Uncle O is one name. Melissa?
I remember a look at hearing my first year of selectmen. We were looking at somebody, it was like a membership list for the club, and they said, "We have a good membership list." And they get handed the sort of miles of chairman, and she looked down and said, "Who's Turk?"
I actually know who Turk is.
Didn't indicate that the list was that strongly fitted.
Now, is there, are you proposing an agenda, or is that the response?
I have to...
Have you heard back?
No.
So you don't know if there's a...
No. Going to the meeting and see what happens. I would think that since we require, we requested the meeting and was set up in response to our request, I would hope that our agenda would serve as a basis. I mean, if not, then I don't know what the value of the meeting is going to, well, we'll see what happens. We hope for the best.
The title is Abington Media Civic Group. Is that what it is?
The corporation is A.C.A.M., Abington Community and Media Access. We added a B in there because Avon has the same name as the other one.
Okay, yeah.
So we added a B, but then added Civic Group, deferential to our corporation. Wasn't very original, but we didn't want to have too many, you know.
And how many members are in that newly formed group?
I'd say I have 20 members.
Twenty members.
Alan, would you agree?
Is there like a, is there like a chairman or stuff, or is it just a group?
I am a chair, I was elected the chairman.
Okay. The meeting on Friday, there'll be an agenda posted. Do they have to, I mean, it's still proposed, it hasn't been approved yet?
I'm assuming it's good, and...
Does it have to be posted 48 hours, or?
It's not a town corporation.
So do you know if that meeting will be videotaped?
I'm going to request, on the scene I submitted, I request it to be videotaped and broadcast.
And you said that two vacancies right now were Dan Breelman and Bill Davis?
They left as producers.
So they're actually left, they're gone?
Yes. They, Bill Davis is going to still do some shows here and there, but nowhere near the volume he's done for 17 years.
Okay.
Which is a major loss.
He actually received an Abington's Best Award a few years ago for all his dedication to the cable.
As a matter of fact, you know, one of the final scenes as a regular volunteer was that, it was last Saturday for the football game. As a matter of fact, when he did the last game, he had him Thanksgiving in Abington. They read a, they read that this is going to be last game in Abington during a filming for a football game, and the crowd and the team turned around to cheer him, which was very nice.
This list is kind of messed up. You guys can see it, but...
So Bill's still, he hasn't physically resigned completely. He's still on?
He submitted a letter of resignation, was written at a school, read at a school community meeting in December. And he said he has some caveats. He'll do a St. Patrick's Day parade. I think he's doing principally, but nowhere near what he has done before. And it always gives you concern if you have your producers leaving.
You probably don't know the answer to this question, but now, you have, you said you need 10% of the members to call for a special meeting, which you have done. So you have 10% of, you counted all these names?
There's 190 names. I think if we know two lists, and there's 153 on what Lisa sent out, in any case, we had 31. So that's more than 10%.
Right, because I mean, obviously, this list looks like it's, I'm not going to say padded, but it just looks...
Thirty-one members?
I mean, there's someone named Poop that's listed as a member.
That's actually me.
Oh, okay.
Now we know.
And there's people that live outside of town, there's some people that have passed.
It's going to stick.
I know there's at least one that's on the list.
There's actually Sam's team, and the comment is, "I play football, and I'm really good," so that's an interesting list. I have others.
I mean, I think we do need a plan.
Absolutely.
But I mean, at any time, I'm going to go, we need 10% for the nomination of members of the board directors. As soon as we get approximately 20, 25 members, then I will submit it for the nomination for Robert Kelly. It was a request, it was a part of the petition, that a meeting be held within two weeks of that being submitted to the board of directors.
This meeting is open to the public, but if votes come up, then you can only vote if you're...
A member.
An actual member, you know.
Yes.
But if you signed up at that special meeting in October, you should be a member.
It's 20 days.
Be able to vote, yes.
Anybody who signed up as of December 1st or earlier, or at least as a member of serious or earlier, should be a member, because that is, the bylaws call for a 20-day week period.
Now, this group that you're in is a new group.
Yes.
Okay. And they were formed for what reason?
Because we were concerned in what has happened in the last, since late October. People have upset about things that have happened. They're obviously upset about the Justin Shanahan situation, which is not under our control at this, you know, especially at this point. We're also concerned when we had the meeting down the, down the high school cafeteria, which several of you attended on October 29th, when we could not get good answers as to what was happening. As a matter of fact, we seem to be getting ruled out of all of, when we were trying to find, request information by the attorney. And obviously, those things that should have been made available, the annual report, the financial reviews. We asked who voted for how on these things, and we told, "We won't tell, we can't tell you." We asked for the minutes of the continuous executive session going on since June, and I think it's still going on as far as I know. And also, the October 29th meeting we had down in the high school cafeteria, there's no minutes from that. That can't be an executive session, closed session. We asked who voted for how on these scenes, and we told, we won't tell, we can't tell you. We asked for the minutes of the continuous executive session going on since June, and I think it's still going on as far as I know. And also, the October 29th meeting we had down in the high school cafeteria, there's no minutes from that. That can't be an executive session, closed session. I think we remember, one of the concerns raised, one of the concerns raised was, they voted, the board of directors voted in May to accept a new mission statement. I'd like to see what it is. They said they're going in a direction to scratch it. What is it? What are their plans? People need to know that information. What I want to avoid is what happened today, the executive director was left to go, and we had a classroom of kids sitting in the high school, not knowing that they were, they are instructed, who was a kid or, and thought that a great job was not a long or belate. That to me was a shame, and I want to make sure we take what action we can do to have better communication at this point. I did ask the school committee chairman if he has heard anything yet, as of early December, on what the directions are, how they affect the school system. He had not heard anything yet. He's hoping to hear something by the January meeting.
And now, there's one, it's, it's a five-member board of directors that are in charge of Abington, but they're short one person now, so there's an opening.
When they had the election, when we had the meeting on October 29th, two members were up for reappointment. Robert Malloy was reelected. Chris Nakabina was, was not reelected by the membership present. So his position, as far as I'm concerned, is vacant. I don't, I don't see how it could have been filled. There's not been another membership made meaning since. Oh, he has a meeting that I know of. So I think Robert Kelly is a fine candidate. For those of you, I think many of you know.
Once this agenda is approved, will you, will you post it somewhere so the residents can see it? How is it going to get out to them? I know it doesn't have to be posted, but are you planning on posting it?
But it's not, it's not up to him to post the agenda.
I will copy it.
It's a requested agenda, he quite gave it to us now, but.
Again, I can give you a copy, but not now. The handwriting is over, but I'll give you a copy.
Yeah, but until the board of directors post an agenda, you don't know what's going to be discussed that night.
I will, I will email Lisa was answered tomorrow and ask her if that agenda is accepted. If not, what is the agenda? Meantime, did somebody make, have five copies of this? My handwriting on it.
It's your handwriting, Joe?
Uh-oh.
Did you, did you read a story about the time I sent a Christmas card to the people I played cards with? I came down and I said, and they said, we loved your card, Joe. Oh, good, we can't read it. I looked at it, I had a figure of some of the words from the text. My wife, my wife refers to it as serious killer scrawl. In the fourth grade, they may, maybe go back from pen to pencil. I'm left-handed, and they still had ink whips. They couldn't afford to keep on mopping up the floors with the ink. As bad as I can, you might as well joke about it because it makes no sense to be accurate.
Well, at least you take a joke, so that's a good thing.
No choice. You have to take a joke.
Well, no, you do.
Not deny, I was going to let you deny it.
Could have yelled at me.
Thank you.
We get that.
Thank you. All right. This was developed by the committee.
Not only is the handwriting bad, the printing is so small.
Saving paper. Actually, I don't know how to use all the features best. I'd rather print out something that's small than spend three hours for an office.
I have no more questions, Mr. Chairman, I don't know of any else.
Huh?
I'm all, I'm all questioned out, so.
All right, anybody else?
So Joe, just, just so I understand, you're, you're going to send an email to Lisa and see if she's accepted it?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe want to let us know.
Yeah, it was, it was sent to her by registered letter last Thursday.
All right.
I assume they have it, and I know it's put on the emails, it'll pass back and forth, so.
All right, six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Obviously, a lot of people busy this time, but we, we have something. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, can I, can I ask a question, too? What does it say in the bylaws, like, I know you've got more than 10% that calls for the meeting, what is it required to be at the meeting for members? Is there, is it in the bylaws?
It has a four-armed scene in the bylaws.
Is it 15?
Let me go back and look at it.
Okay. I just, you know, it's, the Friday before Christmas is a tough time to plan the meeting, so I'm sure that was, you know, intentional.
You can see the bylaws on the website.
No, I have them here, too, I just didn't, I thought he might know off the top of his head, so. Do you know?
A majority of voting members present in a ducalist, no speaking, but not less than five, whose constitution is core. Members may vote at such a meeting in person. The quorum should fail till ten, majority of present may adjourn immediately, time to time, self-moist. And adjourn immediately, and which quorum is present, and you didn't transact, maybe transacts, which, higher than transacts, that's the meaning as originally noted. In the event of fewer than 15 members, board of directors shall retake the power of voting in hand, otherwise we can do a two or four vote for members.
Okay.
Now, if we get 15 members, there's not basically board of directors who will run the meeting.
Yep, so out of the 100, so the 153 members, hopefully, 15 can come.
Fifteen, believe fifteen, I don't see why not, 15.
And if you are Poop, I'd like you to introduce yourself to me, I'd like you to-
So I may wish for ten, but we would like to see what they have, because, I mean, it would make the situation, we go out and we only have 13 members, and board of directors say, we're going to take care of them, not for the money. I mean, I'm not saying they're wrong, but I think that's what we intend.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All righty. Last but not least on the agenda, town managers' report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a few things. This past December 2nd, Bud's Goods and Provisions, they had their planning board review seeking their site plan approval and a special permit for their proposed retail marijuana establishment, that's at 1540 Bedford Street. That was approved, both of those were approved, and I know it was reasonably well-attended, and it's my understanding that even some town officials from Weymouth were there and reasonably supportive of the proposal here, so I'm happy to see that. The other proposal, Green Harbor, I understand is seeking to schedule their site plan review process right now with the planning board. They have held their community outreach meeting, and I know that, I have reason to believe that went well. I think most people who had concerns were at the Bud's Goods and Provisions Community Outreach Meeting. Tricombe, some people may know it as Tricombe before they changed their name, so. So that's moving forward, and right now, it's a process, maybe perhaps three months or so before it gets through approval by the CCC at the state level, the Cannabis Control Commission.
So it's in their hands now?
Yes.
Where all their work with, with the planning board is done?
Yes, all their local approval.
So it goes to CCC now, and then it comes back to us?
Well, once they get approval from the CCC, they can begin to operate, because the board has already approved their host community agreement.
We'll be informed when they open up, right?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Don't worry, Jim, you'll know. I'll have to race you down there. We will be informed before they open up, right?
I expect so, I, you know, it's not a specific requirement, but I would be very surprised if there isn't some sort of invitation.
Well, the thing is, most restaurants in town will have a soft opening, he's hoping for the soft opening for this.
We need it.
This is in the minutes, remember, this is a public meeting, so.
Yeah, for what you said.
Well, one of the, the issues that has come up, or it's really not an issue, but inquiry, not just here, but in other locations, is, you know, whether proponents should be going through the planning board first, and, you know, it takes a lot of time and a lot of money to go through the site plan and special permitting process, and to do that before you have a host community agreement, it doesn't make any sense. That's why it makes sense for proponents to go through this process first, but that, that has come up. So it shouldn't be coming up in this form, but I just want you to know that there, there are some, there is one particular vendor, proponent, who is not happy that their project was not forwarded, did not get to the planning board process, but there, you know, we're out of licenses, we only have two, so that's, so if you're hearing anything about that, I think I've already given you a heads up on that, that, you know, the bottom line is, you start here, you start at the board of selectmen, you don't start with the planning Next on my list, in the early stages of transitioning our streetlights to LED, I mentioned this to you last meeting, just briefly, and there's a couple different ways to do that. One is to have National Grid just replace them. The other is, which is the standard method, is for the cities and towns, just to purchase the fixtures at the depreciated rate, which is virtually nothing, and then use your own contractor for, for maintenance. It looks like, though, we'll be in the ballpark to be able to save about $25,000 a year on a street lighting, a street lighting bill, so hopefully, that's something that at least we'll have those agreements in place, you know, hopefully by, by your next meeting, so. And I know we've already spoke about it briefly, the subcommittee and I, before the meeting, the police management and operations analysis. We've received five responses, approximately 20 took out copies of the RFP for review, five were returned. Of the five, one of them falls within the amount that has been appropriated by the town. Have, provide that list to you, but at the request of the subcommittee, I'm giving you all a copy of all of those tonight, and I'll be going through and ranking them pursuant to the, the criteria that were in the RFP, and then from there, we can decide what to do, whether it's seeking a further appropriation, or working with the company that, that meets the appropriation. So that's ongoing, and I know it was discussed that, that we want to make sure that we target that for the next selectman's meeting, just as a timetable. And as, I'm sure you're all very happy about, we're actually replacing the security systems here at Town Hall. The so-called key fob system is just, it's not something that can, we can repair. It's software problems that aren't being serviced and aren't going to be serviced, we don't, the contract for that is, is well behind us. We, so we do have two vendors we've spoken to, one of them we're likely going to be moving forward with, it's a vendor the schools have used and they recommend highly. We're also going to be replacing the, the camera systems outside and inside Town Hall. There's, there's seven cameras between the, on the park, between the parking lots and inside the building, so those are also antiquated. So we're in the process of replacing all those. The bad news is, is you have no excuse not to get in the building after that, so, because it's, it's obviously a problem well beyond the volunteer boards and committees.
You have a timetable, Alan, you expect that to be under?
I don't, but I will get that to you as soon as, we're actually in the process of hopefully signing a contract within the next day or two, but I will let you know that. A lot of anxious people.
Rick, where did that, where's that money coming from, if you don't mind?
We have some money in our building operations fund, our building maintenance fund. It's not out of the question that we may need some more money down the road. We have enfor, I have informed the finance committee of this, this was, at the beginning of the fiscal year, this was unforeseen, and so it's possible we'll be seeking a reserve fund transfer. That's something, again, the next finance committee meeting, we've been had a back-and-forth with the finance committee. So we'll, I hate to use money, knowing we're going to be in arrears in a particular budget at the end of the year, that's really not the intent. So our goal, if necessary, is to speak to the finance committee about a reserve fund transfer, and as I said, we've already given them the heads up.
Who are the companies you're dealing with? Said there was two?
Yes, you would ask me, wouldn't you? I've got the information in the other room.
You can get it later, if you don't mind.
Okay, yes.
You can call them.
Yeah.
You can call them.
Yeah.
You can call Tom and make Tom call him, too.
That's right.
Yeah, you can call me and I'll phone one.
That's right, right.
Or not.
The last thing, and as, you know, Joe had mentioned to me earlier today, Joe Shea, that the, the Union Point Redevelopment Authority, they've, there's two candidates they've narrowed down to for the master developer, one of them was interviewed last night, the other one is being interviewed tonight, so Joe informs me that at their next meeting, which is, as yet, there's not a date scheduled, that the SRA does intend to choose a new master developer for the Union Point.
And their proposals are available online? All right, because I think it's important that we look at it, because my understanding, some of the proposals might want to change the zoning in Abington's portion. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
And I know, I'm sure Mr. Donovan will be giving you a little more thorough update-
Yeah, he's been really good about that, so.
I, one group asked to, had somebody, asked me to talk to them about, I know, it's the same, one side or another, and they, I was a little concerned about their response, because they were mostly interested in residential. I said, residential only, to me would not be, I would not want it. We need commercial, industrial up there to provide proper funding for the costs the towns would have, especially for Abington and Rockland, because what we could end up was residential only. If we have police and fire costs up there, or school costs up there, residential only, we will be running, we will be losing money. Never mind the other problems that will come about, the other question is, that maybe both firms may be talking, I believe are talking about increase in residential above what was originally, above their current limits, I don't know what limits they're talking about, because there's been so many limits floating around, but that does give them concern, how much more people can support up there. I have heard at least one of them is looking to have the zoning for the, about four years ago, Abington, by the advice of the planning board, rezoned 180 acres to residential. I've heard one of them, firms wants to change that.
Well, not residential.
To-
Industrial, commercial.
To residential, we, we know, we had to change to non-residential.
Right, non-residential, yes.
They want to change it back to, to residential. And to me, that was, I wouldn't vote for it.
No.
I mean, I, I think the town will lose.
Tommy was pretty adamant in favor of non-residential because of the cost.
As, as was the planning.
Yes, so.
Not only that, and the taxing of the fire and police, yeah.
We've only had a problem up there once, about at least six months ago, on the, I think, last winter. They did not have proper water pressure for some of the new buildings, a building caught on fire near a train station, and the-
Oh, that's right.
Multiple towns had fire engines sitting there for hours, waiting for the, it gets enough water to put the scene out. I mean, because that only, because it's a cost to the town, obviously, but also, it hurts our own protection for our own citizens. You can only count on mutual aid from other towns for so much.
Yep.
And that's all, obviously, always the issue up there, where is the water and sewer going to come from?
So we'll definitely keep an eye on it.
Water come from and sewer go to. I assume any new developer, there's going to be changes in the zoning and the overall plans, that's a given, and they may be good, may be bad, may be consequential, but they all have to review to see what they want to do.
Right, but that, that means that they have to come before us, the town, and we have to rezonate, correct?
Yes.
Right, and then what happens, and what happens if we don't?
With one caveat, depends on what the legislation says at any one point.
Because they could change the legislation.
They changed it in 2014, when this town was violently opposed to it, in my opinion, it was a disaster.
Mm-hmm.
And it ended up in a disaster. As a matter of fact, the developer wrote this legislation, and then went bankrupt.
Yep.
So I would suggest we, you know, we need to keep a close eye on this situation.
Yeah, and like Rick said, Kevin will be coming in to talk to us, or, you know, he always reaches out to us, I mean, you know.
Yeah, he's very good about that, very good.
I just thought I would mention it, but I mean, Kevin has much more knowledge of what's going on than I do. There could be any meeting every day, everybody.
No, we appreciate you speaking, Joe, seriously, thank you.
Somebody may come up to you and say, I hear this happened in Weymouth, you know anything about it. One thing to say, we've heard about it, another thing to say, we know nothing about it.
I'm just going to say, call Joe Shea. Give me your phone number.
Oh, Kevin, if they want to call me, that's fine, if I answer them, I'm going to stay, keep involved. I'm not giving you, I can give you all the answers, I only know the questions. Keep involved, go to the meeting, announce that another yearly base review committee can attend, try to become a member, get involved.
That, that stands for a lot of other things, too, get involved.
Yep, that's true.
Not just that.
Don't all kind of one person to give you all the answers. Person could happen to be the village idiot.
All right. Very good.
Our next meeting?
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
Do we have any plans?
Should be what, the second? The second Monday?
The thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, around Mount Luther King Day?
My calendar doesn't... It's all right.
Is that too late? Do we want to go to the sixth? Sixth and the twenty-seventh, maybe?
The thirteenth, as you know.
If you either want sixth and twenty, or fourteen and twenty-seven?
Fourteenth.
Mm-hmm. Thirteenth, you mean, right?
Thirteenth is Mount Luther King Day, right?
No, the twentieth.
Oh, the twentieth is... Oh, I see.
You do the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, or you think the thirteenth is too late? You want to get cracking before that, the sixth?
I'm good with the sixth, or the thirteenth, either way.
When are you... Are you going away not till February?
I'm retired. It doesn't matter. Might be February, might be March.
So, you do sixth and the twenty-seventh?
I think that sounds pretty good.
All right.
Sounds good to me.
Everybody good with that?
I'm good. January sixth and the twenty-seventh.
You all right with that, Rick?
Yes, sir.
Which date?
Well, I just want to check, so...
Come on, that meeting for the sixth.
My 2019 calendar is actually... Twenty... In the other room, so...
Sixth and twenty-seventh is tentatively scheduled for right now.
Sixth and twenty-seventh.
Is that where we really do the stuff earlier?
On the agenda for the sixth, can you just put down for me and Jim to update the board on the town council search, or...
The answer, you get that?
On the sixth?
He's asking me to get to you, but...
Yes.
On the sixth, Tim and Jim will report on the town council search. Rick, am I driving her crazy?
She... I've been driving her crazy all day. Don't worry. She's used to it.
Quick question back. Checking on LED lights. Is that... I know we had red capped a lot of lights. Is that just... Are you inventorying the current lights now, or would that be...
That would be actually all the fixtures, so that would include everything.
The ones that were red capped would be converted over as well, do you know, or...
I don't know that. That's... I guess that's a, you know, I would expect... I don't know how many have been red capped for a number of years, but presumably, we would have... We would be saving sufficient funds that perhaps we could...
It'd be nice to see them, yeah.
Yeah.
I love how you guys keep saying red cap, but just mean shut off, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure.
That's right.
Is that... Okay, I was just wondering.
So, they turn, both physically turn.
And I'm not sure how many are in that, because I know that was during the last, you know, major economic downturn in the...
Yeah.
Before my time. But it's a very... It's a good point. We can certainly justify it. See what we can do with that, right?
Thank you.
Do you want anything with the building inspector, or anything, Kevin?
The next meeting, could we... I know we talked about it. It means misunderstanding, but having the building inspector in, just the condition of the buildings, you know, overall condition, health of the buildings.
The building inspector doesn't really inventory the buildings, but we can put together some information.
Yeah, from the department heads or something, Rick?
Yeah, we can get...
Have the department heads or whatnot.
We can get an inventory list or a project list that we need to deal with.
And I recall, wasn't the building inspector talking about raising the fees?
He was talking about fees.
Maybe if he's going to come in anyways, he can talk to us about that.
Like I said, he's not... He doesn't do building analysis and maintenance.
Right, but I think we did want to talk with him, Rick, about his... About the fees.
Yes. Well, I know you're not going to take any action without him here. That was...
Right. No, and I understand that. So, you may want to ask him to come. So, we're going to go over it. As a matter of fact, thank you.
I'd be happy to, yes, sir.
Anything else on the... That people want on the agenda?
No. Budget is going good.
Budget?
Yep.
It's going. I just want to wish everybody happy holidays and safe travels, no matter which. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Anything else that I might have missed?
For the rest of us.
So, everyone.
We'll be having the hearing of the grievances.
Say what? We're still on some.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Unanimous.